Awesome. Okay, so I'll do a little welcome again. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being at the HUD Pro Virtual Public Comment today. Now that we're recording, I want to just get through a couple other housekeeping things. First of all, I'm John. Welcome and hello. I'm John Stovall. I work at the Department of Community Affairs for the state of Georgia. I'm a Senior Housing Policy Specialist and I'm joined with my two of my colleagues here today, Laura Ann and Austin. Would you like to just introduce yourselves real quick?
Sure. Hi, I'm Austin Chansey. I'm the Senior Housing Policy Analyst at the Department of Community Affairs and most relevant to this conversation, I help run the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing.
And I'm Laura Ann Holland. I have the pleasure of working with John and Austin and other DCA staff on the call. Thanks so much, Kim Carter, Glenn Meisner, and Kathleen Vaughn from our Community Development Block Grant Program, which will be partnering with this great opportunity for us. So I just want to give them a special shout out too, since they're on the call as well.
Cool. So in the interest of introductions, we would love to know if who's on the call. So I don't think we'll have time for everyone to verbally introduce themselves, but if you want to put in the chat, use your name, what organization you're with, if you want to include your pronouns, anything like that, it'd be great to know. Maybe what part of Georgia you are joining us from, or if you're somehow from outside of Georgia, we're interested in that too. So yeah, feel free to introduce yourself in the chat. And then I also wanted to just do a quick clarifying of what today's call is about. So this is about a federal HUD grant that the DCA is applying for. And as part of that requirement, we want to make sure that we are getting public feedback on our application, how to strengthen it, what questions or clarifications we can offer to you all. But what it is not about is, and DCA is doing a lot of things right now, so one of those things is we've recently opened up the Housing Choice Voucher Waitlist. And you may have heard about this. And so this is not going to be focused on, we're not going to even discuss the Housing Choice Voucher Waitlist or Section 8 Waitlist. If you're looking for information on that, the waitlist is still open as of today and will be through midnight tonight. So please visit the link that Laura Ann's going to put in the chat. That will help you get to the registration page for the Housing Choice Voucher Waitlist. And there's also an email address and a phone number that you can call if you need as well. So just wanted to clarify, we're not going to talk about the Housing Choice Vouchers today, but if you joined thinking that's what this was about, and you still want to stay and listen to the HUD Pro information, we welcome you. Okay, I think, let me just double check that there's no more housekeeping things. Cool. I think that's, I think we're good. So I'm going to share my screen and Austin and I are going to go through a presentation together. And then sort of after we're done kind of doing the presenting part of this session, we're going to open it up for questions, clarifications, any comments that you all have. Not that, there we go. Not that either. Hold on. There we go. Can everyone see my screen? Great. And there we go. So as I mentioned a couple of times, HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which funds a lot of affordable housing and homelessness programs throughout the United States, has released a grant recently called the HUD Pro Grant, or Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing. So it's open to a lot of different jurisdictions across the country, and the Department of Community Affairs, as an eligible entity, is submitting our application to apply for funding as part of this grant. So what we want to do today is just give you information about the grant in general, like what it is, what's the purpose, what are the parameters for it. And then we want to go into our specific proposal, because there are others that we're competing against, but we want to share what our proposed project will be. And that includes going into some details about the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, which Austin will talk about, and then how our proposal builds on that. So we'll talk a little bit about those things. And then the third main goal is for us to invite public input for us to incorporate into our final application. Some of you all, maybe many of you all are probably understand a lot of the housing-related acronyms that get thrown out there a lot, but I definitely don't want to make that assumption about everyone here. So I want to just go through a few of the key acronyms that we'll be discussing today. We'll try not to just consistently use them. We'll try to say them out loud as much as we can, but shorten things to use acronyms. So HUD, for example, that's the Housing and Urban Development Department, the U.S. Federal Government Department that is the main funder for this grant. PRO is the name of the grant. It stands for Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Affordable Housing. DCA, that's the Georgia State Department that several of us on this call work for, and that who is applying for the federal funds, that's the Department of Community Affairs. AMI is something that you'll hear frequently in terms of income levels for affordable housing. So that refers to the area median income. In a lot of affordable housing units, the rents are set so that they are affordable to people at a certain AMI. GIC, or G-I-C-H, but we call it GIC, is the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. It's essentially an educational and capacity building program throughout the state of Georgia for communities who want to create more affordable housing. And that's going to be like part of the backbone of our application here. CDBG stands for the Community Development Block Grant. That's a federal funding source that funds all kinds of local infrastructure, utilities. Sometimes it can, in certain circumstances, fund like housing rehabs and things like that. That is going to be the framework of how HUD is administering this HUD program. LIHTC is the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. It's the U.S.'s largest affordable housing funding source. It's the way that we build, so the primary way that most states build affordable rental multifamily housing. CHIP is the Community Home Investment Program. That is a state-of-Georgia program, but it's funded through federal funds. But what it does is we can rehab single-family homes and also create affordable rental homes. Or affordable homeownership homes. Okay, so at any point, I just want to say, at any point, y'all are welcome to chime in and just ask a clarifying question for things like that, because we want this to be as accessible as possible. And because I can't see your, I can't see your names or faces at the moment, you're welcome to just unmute and just say, hey, John, can you actually clarify this real quick? Or if you have a question in the chat, that's sort of very relevant to something I just said, and not like a larger question, you can put it in the chat, and then Laura Ann is going to be monitoring and can help. Just help make sure we clarify those things before we move on and forget about it. So, okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about the HUD Pro Grant generally. And then after that, I'm going to pass it to Austin, and we're going to talk about what is GIC, what is GIC Senior, and how does the HUD Pro funding for our application build on GIC Senior and create a really strong statewide application. So the HUD Pro Grant, as I mentioned, it's through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. They just released it this year, the beginning of August, essentially. This is the first time that they've done this. So this is not a regular, you know, annual grant that comes out from HUD. This is sort of a special thing, and I think they're treating it kind of like a pilot. So in terms of what the basics are for the grant, they have $85 million that they are going to be awarding total. They're planning on awarding about 20 different awardees, and the minimum award is going to be a million dollars, the maximum is $10 million. So for DCA, the most that we could possibly request and receive would be $10 million. As we'll talk about later, the amount we're going to be applying for is about 8.24 million. Excuse me. The grant is going to be administered through the Community Development Block Grant Framework. So if you just think about it as like, how's the money flowing from HUD to DCA, assuming we get the grant, it's going to go through our Community Development Block Grant Team and channel, essentially. And that means it has to follow the majority of those guidelines and regulations. We'll talk a little bit about, there's some waivers that HUD has put in place for this particular funding source, so that it's actually a little bit more flexible than your traditional CDBG, but we'll get to that in a little bit. The performance period for this grant, meaning like, once you get the money, how long do you have to implement it and to spend it, is January 2024 roughly through September 2029, I think, also roughly, but about five years, five to six years, is how long we would have this money for. There is no state match required, so it's just funding, oh, I'm sorry, this is totally wrong. There is a, well, here, more specifically, there's no match required, but in order to be competitive, in order to be competitive for the funding, they score applications higher that do have matching dollars. So technically, that's right, I guess, but you know, it's unlikely that people who get, or entities that get funded are not going to have a match. In terms of eligible entities to apply, state governments, local governments, metropolitan planning organizations, multi-jurisdictional entities are eligible. DCA is acting as a state government in our application. This is the general grant timeline. As I mentioned, this notice of funding opportunity from HUD was released in, I believe, early August. So we've been spending the last two months gathering information, talking to people, putting together this proposal, and the public input period, which is, this is a requirement for submitting an application, is that every entity has to have a two-week public input period. So we opened that up on October 4, and it went until today. And then today is our, obviously, this public input hearing, also a requirement for the public input requirements for submitting an application. And then we have about, after today, we have about 10 days, nine, 10 days or so, to submit our application to HUD. So the deadline is October 30. After we submit that, then HUD will do its scoring, they'll review all the applications, and then they'll let the awardees know sometime. I don't think I saw in the, I didn't see a date that they're holding themselves to for this, but we can probably assume somewhere around the end of this year. But we'll see, sometime soon, TBD. And then the performance period is once you receive an award, then that you have through September 2029. So eligible activities, what can you do with this funding? The purpose is to identify and remove barriers to affordable housing production and preservation. We can, I'm going to have a slide later where we'll go through some examples of what that means. But in general, you know, you think about like, okay, in Georgia and everywhere, essentially, but in Georgia, we have a significant need for affordable housing. And where there's local will and there's local, potentially some resources, but there's still some barriers in the way locally to make it happen, to get projects over the finish line, to bring things to scale. What are those barriers? How are we identifying them? And then how are we going to tackle them? That's kind of the goal of this grant. It must meet a national objective for CDBG. So as I mentioned, the funding will flow through the CDBG channel. And so while there's some things that are waived from the normal regulations, it definitely has to meet one of the CDBG national objectives. There's three of them. One is to serve low and moderate income households. One is for urgent needs, so that's often like disaster-related, either prevention or recovery. And then the third is around removing blight. So as long as anyone's proposal meets one of those three, you're good to go. Other, more specifically eligible activities, this is language from HUD, "activities that further develop, evaluate and implement housing policy plans, improve housing strategies, and facilitate affordable housing production and preservation." And then, as I mentioned, there are a couple waivers that are allowed under this, but one of the waivers is that unlike typical CDBG funds, construction of new affordable housing is an allowable activity here. So I'll go through like how we believe HUD is going to be prioritizing and scoring applications. So this is based on a webinar that they presented. First of all, there's two HUD priorities that are pretty explicitly named in the application language. One is "applications that show progress and a commitment to overcoming local barriers to facilitate the increase in affordable housing production and preservation," and[972.57][973.77]"applications that show an acute demand for housing affordable to households with incomes below 100% of the area median income." So if you submit an application and you don't have both of those, or maybe you have one but not the other, your application is likely going to be deprioritized, or is not going to be very competitive. So we wanted to make sure that our application includes both of those kind of priority things there. And just a quick note about the how HUD is determining the acute demand, they have actually listed, they created a whole map and a list of priority geographies that are calculated based on one of three pretty specific data points that they've put together that show the need for affordable housing in those areas. So it's mostly counties, but they also look at places, which can be towns and cities. So they have a whole list, and we looked at the whole map and the whole list and figured out which of, like, what are the priority geographies in Georgia, and how will they fit in with our application? And then so how they're scoring, HUD is going to be scoring the applications based on 100-point system here. The need and soundness of approach are going to be the bulk of what they're looking at for scoring. So can you show that you have a significant need in your jurisdiction that you're applying for? That's 35 points. A big part of that need, again, is showing that you're serving priority geographies. Soundness of approach is like how well thought through is your application? Are you, you know, another specific section that they include within soundness of approach is around affirmatively furthering fair housing. So are you intentionally incorporating that work into your application? So those kind of things. How strong and robust is your application? Capacity, like, do you have the capacity to actually implement what you're saying you want to implement? That's 10 points. Leverage, that's again, the matching funds. So you know, if you don't have any kind of matching funds to invest in this project, then you're going to get zero points out of 10. But if you have, and there's sort of a scale, but if you have 50% of your total request or more in matching funds, then you'll get the full 10 points. And then long-term effect is kind of like, it's exactly what it sounds like. How big of a long-term effect is your project going to have on the overall affordable housing landscape? So this is a map. It's a little bit hard to see. This is a map of the priority geographies in Georgia. It's kind of hard to see the outline of Georgia there, but the ones in blue and green are priority geographies. So you can see there's quite a few in Georgia, and so we intend to serve a good number of those through our application. So that is an overall, that's like a summary of the HUD Pro Grant itself. I'm about to pass it to Austin, where the two of us will kind of talk about the HUD, our HUD Pro application, DCA's application, but Austin's going to go specifically into GIC, or Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, and GIC Senior, because that's like pretty essential to our overall application. So I'll pass it to you, Austin.
Thanks, John. So what we're asking for in this grant specifically is, we're requesting $8.2 million to provide technical assistance through $1 million grants to selected Georgia communities. And the way we're going to select those Georgia communities is through the GIC Senior Year Program. John, you want to go on the next slide? So to understand GIC Senior Year, first you need to understand GIC. GIC is the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. It's a program that will be turning 20 next year, so we're very excited about that. But it is a three-year program where each year we select five communities to go through the GIC program, and through that, they learn how to attract affordable investment to their communities. They learn about all the different programs that DCA offers, and they are able to receive scoring advantages for three DCA programs, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, the CHIP program, and the Community Development Block Grant program. And it's a very successful program, very competitive. This year, we had our largest pool of applicants ever had. It's geographically represented, and we're very proud of the GIC program. And because of the success of the program, we are now excited to launch the GIC Senior Year Program. While you're in GIC, you're referred to as a freshman, a sophomore, and a junior. And so now we've created the GIC Senior Year Program, which I will talk about on the next slide. So GIC Senior Year is going to be a competitive program for the GIC alumni program. So once you go through the GIC program, after you've been out of it, you have the opportunity to apply for what is known as alumni certification status. And that allows, if you achieve that status, you're allowed to maintain all of your program benefits for another two years, and you can continue to reapply. Through that, we currently have a pool of 50 alumni communities. And so they will be the ones that can apply for GIC Senior Year. We will be selecting two communities to participate in a two-year cohort. And through that two-year program, they will receive technical assistance from DCA as well as DC, such as the University of George Municipal Association, amongst others. And they will be able to pull other resources, but then they're also going to have the option to select from menu of DCA programs that we are leveraging for this program. And so that includes the LIHTC Award, a CHIP Award, and a CDBG funding. And to, for these projects, they still have to meet all of the criteria these programs face. It's not just going to be automatic award. They still have to have a quality project lined up. John, you want to go on the next slide? And so this is the goal of the program. It's to demonstrate the transformative value of GIC and DCA's programs, is to grow a stronger housing ecosystem throughout the state of Georgia, and to help communities address their housing issues. This is a sample timeline of what we think the program will look like in effect. We plan to open applications in November, and we plan to have the program started in next April. The blue text you'll see up there, that is kind of our sample plan of what the technical assistance will look like. And the black text, those are important dates for DCA programs. And so we're trying to align our instruction with the primary opportunity for these programs, applications. There will be lots of other technical assistance unrelated to those specific programs. We plan to teach people about fair housing and housing choice vouchers, short-term rentals, things like that. And then they will conclude, this first class will conclude in two years. Next slide. So again, these are the specific benefits to awardees from the program. They'll receive technical assistance from the program administrators on important housing issues, and they will have access to set aside DCA resources. That will total more than $4 million of investment. And that includes the CHIP program for either rehab or new construction, the Community Development Block Grant, 9% LIHTC project, and a 4% LIHTC project. Should we get the HUD Pro funding, they will get a $1 million output from us that can be used for further technical assistance, gap financing, et cetera. And so as part of our development of our HUD Pro application, we sent out a poll to all of our alumni communities, and we were excited by how much feedback we got. And I won't go through all the results with you, but just kind of looking at the top five issues, those were cost of land, community opposition to affordable housing, zoning ordinances, and insufficient infrastructure. And these are all things we plan to, that would be addressed through either the curriculum of the program or the programs that we'll be providing. And this is back to you, John.
Okay, great. Thanks, Austin. So you got a good sense of the GIC program, of GIC Senior Year, and then of how we are investing the HUD Pro funding into the GIC Senior Year Program as an enhancement. I think we've already shown this slide, but we wanted to bring it back again, just as kind of like a summary. So this green area here, this is the $1 million grants that would be awarded to two GIC Senior Year communities per cohort. And so the million-dollar grants are, and this is like up to a million dollars, but you know, who's not going to take the full amount? They are intended to be flexible, and that's because HUD, the HUD Pro Grant, really allows for a lot of flexibility, and we didn't want to arbitrarily sort of limit what a community says is their biggest barrier to affordable housing and how they might want to address it. GIC will definitely like, you know, provide technical assistance to sort of like help ensure that communities are thinking about it in a constructive way. But in terms of what can be on the table for use with the flexible funds, there's honestly a very long laundry list of, you know, potential eligible activities that HUD identified and that we included as part of our overall application. Here's just a few examples. So, and there's actually not even, you know, there's more kind of buckets, if you will. There's planning and policy activities, development activities. There's also like preservation activities and others, but this is just a few examples. So what you could do with the million-dollar grant as a GIC Senior Community is develop or update your housing plan, community development strategy, zoning and land use policies, such as overlays to encourage multifamily and mixed-use development, or access to affordable housing. So I don't need to read that whole thing to you, but there's a lot even there. You can use it to develop proposals to streamline and modernize your local permit process. You can look at other development activities, such as acquisition or disposition of public land, or of land in general, or real property for the development of affordable housing. Establish or assist a community development financial institution to carry out financial strategies, facilitate the conversion of commercial or other properties to new housing. There's a lot of examples out there. These are specifically intended, like, you know, the whole list is intended to address, as Austin said, those needs that were identified in the poll that we sent out. So this is our proposed grant budget. As we mentioned earlier, we're requesting 8.24 million over the duration of the, is it six years, through 2029. Each cohort will have $2 million that we're requesting, so 1 million per community. So the cohort would be 24 to 25. The next one would get an additional $2 million, $1 million per community, for a total of four cohorts of two communities each, which adds up to $8 million. And then our admin costs that we're including for like technical assistance and general administration program is $240,000. So that adds up to $8,240,000 that we're requesting. So kind of in summary, these are just a few of the strengths that we think our application presents, and we're really excited to hear what your thoughts are on this, and like where we may be missing something, or what additional strengths you may see. But first of all, it builds on existing infrastructure and capacity, and the resources that we're already providing through the GIC program. So we're not starting from scratch on something, which is kind of hard to do in a tight timeline, and we're just building on success, essentially. we're just building on success essentially. Secondly, there's sort of a snowball effect to the GIC Program because, you know, I like to think about education as a public good, meaning it's not a zero-sum game. If you're, if you know more about affordable housing and how to build it, then that helps me because I can learn from you. If I know more, then I can help other people. And it just like snowballs on itself over time. The fact that the GIC Program is 20 years old already and now we're expanding it, I think is a really huge opportunity for that long-term impact element of the application. Our application is strong because HUD in their notice of funding said that they will prioritize applications with a wider geographic scope. And so ours is essentially looking at the entire state of Georgia. Not every community is going to be eligible, but every alumni community who's gone through the GIC Program will be eligible. And so that's quite a, quite a few. And they're all scattered throughout the state, so it's pretty, it's an exciting opportunity there geographically. We think it's a strength that the funding is going to be flexible, but specifically targeted to the community needs locally. So we can provide technical assistance to a community who wants to address a specific need in their area as well as, you know, funneling targeted resources to them. From the priority community standpoint, which is part of the, it's part of HUD's identification of what communities have a high need. It turns out quite a good number of the GIC alumni communities are overlap. They overlap with the HUD Priority Communities. So at least 10 of them are going to be priority communities. And the rest, you know, honestly have a high need as well. They got accepted into the GIC Program because they have identified a high need in their community. And then we are also leveraging state resources, so the 10 points in the application that looks at leveraging funds, we are actually able to do that quite well with this because we're putting dedicated or we are allowing GIC Communities to access a menu of state resources through the Lytech, CHIP, and CDVG Funds. So we're actually able to use those as our, as our state match, which gets us, we think, the full 10 points. So now it's time to open it up for questions and I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so that I can see your faces or at least your names. And we've got like 24 minutes or so.
And John, just to jump in really quick on the question piece. I know there's folks from lots of different stakeholder groups here present. And we've presented a lot of information. And so the questions that we're asking for specifically in this public hearing are going to be around our HUD application. So I know there's folks here who might be stakeholders for the GIC Senior Year Program. And to the extent that your feedback will help us enhance our HUD Pro Funding piece of that and how the GIC Senior Year Program fits into that, we'd love to receive it. But the actionable items we'll take away are specifically today for the HUD Pro Grant Application.
Yeah, thanks. Good clarification. And so Laura Ann, Austin, and I will kind of tag team the questions here. We do have some like more guided questions we can throw your way to elicit your feedback, but we want to start off with just, what are your, first of all, do you have any clarifying questions? And there's always space for clarifying questions throughout the other questions that you may ask or comments. And if you don't have any clarifying questions, what are your initial reactions and/or thoughts, comments, suggestions? Feel free to just come off mute, put it in the chat, any way you want to communicate is welcome.
John, do you see that question?
Yep, I see, yep, just reading it. So Kelly asks, "Infrastructure is major local government cost to expand into areas for development. What is an allowable expense for utility infrastructure expansion?" I believe that that would be considered eligible as a HUD Pro expense, just sort of expanding utility infrastructure because that is a barrier for some communities to creating affordable housing. So as long as it relates to housing, I think that would be maybe the link to make, and that's a common CDVG use anyway. But if anybody-
Yeah, and CDVG team, I see we have Kim, Kathleen, and Glenn on the call. If there's anything to clarify there about what those allowable expenses typically are for housing, please jump in.
Really what we see as it relates to housing is the expansion of water and sewer as well as street drainage and sidewalk road improvements type of situation that would help in a neighborhood, a neighborhood type of environment. I have one example that we've used, and Glenn, you can chime in on this. In the city of Washington, where we put in the infrastructure and then CHIP came in and developed the housing on top of that infrastructure.
Awesome, thanks. Cool. What other, what other just reactions or general feedback do y'all have? Yeah, it's a cool opportunity. I agree. See a couple of people typing in the chat, so I'm on the edge of my seat. Okay, Glenn says, "Attendees at the DCA Fall Conference will hear directly from the city of Washington." Oh, that's cool. "As how the project was developed and accomplished." That's great. And Austin will also be giving a GIC Senior Workshop at the DCA Fall Conference. So if anybody's planning on being there, that's where you can learn a little bit more about those things. So Kelly, is there a percentage of the grant that has to serve less than 100% of AMI? Or does it require 100% of those served to be less than 100% AMI? I can't remember off the top of my head. Laura Ann, do you remember?
Yes, yeah, Kelly. So since this is an expansion of the Community Development Block Grant, all of the funding still has to meet one of their national objectives. And so it would be serving people below 100% of AMI. And I believe most of the funding will be serving those below 80% AMI. So in terms of the technical assistance and planning that this grant would allow us to do impairing all of our resources for communities, we're hoping that we would be able to be a part of those discussions about which projects this funding could apply to and which projects it might not be relevant for.
Okay, maybe this is a good opportunity. We're welcoming any more general feedback as well, but I had a couple more specific questions. So as we shared, there's kind of two elements to what this funding can can help with for GIC Senior Communities. One is that flexible pot of money to be used for whatever local barriers you want to address. The other is adding more technical assistance from DCA in terms of like how to kind of, how to do that, how to use that funds and also how to, how to like pair different DCA resources together to create a really comprehensive project locally. So first I want to ask about technical assistance in general. We want to get your general thoughts on, you know, how can we best set up our TA to serve GIC Communities? Are there specific capacity building opportunities that you're thinking of? Are there specific sort of like types of education you want to receive or are there? Yeah, those kind of questions. Would love to hear your feedback on the TA piece of it.
Hello, this is Dr. Bambi with Georgia Act. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I can't speak specifically to GIC Communities with Georgia Act, but I'm sure some may fall into that category, but just kind of, because we work all 159 counties and what I have seen from municipal leaders is that a lot of them just don't know where to start. They just don't know, you know, they know that affordable housing is a need. A lot of people think it's just your urban communities, but is there smaller urban and rural communities that need affordable housing as well, as well as the infrastructure that goes along with it? I'm from southwest Georgia, so we see a lot of floods in that area. But I don't know, maybe a development 101 or something. Oftentimes when I'm on calls, it's usually the, you know, the, it's like the mayor. Sometimes it's that the community development person, but not authorized, but some way to get that community development person or that person who's going to be working directly on the project, some additional training. But I know from the, when you look at from the higher-ups, the mayors and some city council people, you know, just having them to get just a good, basic overall understanding of the program, I think would be, or what the eligible uses are, because that's mostly what I see. A lot of people just don't know what the eligible uses are. When we did, when we went out and did the, we was, when the ARPA money came down and we went into several communities, a lot of people just thought that it could go to infrastructure. They didn't understand that there were other eligible uses. So I think that's just kind of a lessons learned that we saw with the ARPA money. And so as far as technical assistance, making sure that those frontline staff persons are trained and then maybe even the, you know, the mayors or city council, county commission, city commission, depending on what it's called, what city you're in, that they have a basic understanding of its eligible uses so that, you know, the frontline person is saying, hey, well, we can use it for this. But then some of the council people are saying, well, no, we have to use it for infrastructure. So that was just kind of my very, very general broad observations.
Yeah, thanks for that, Dr. Bambi. Yeah, great insights. I don't know, Austin, if you want to speak to that a little bit with the GIC Program and kind of how it does that and how we could maybe enhance the local government, local elected official education?
Well, that's actually a huge part of GIC Senior, I guess, as by design. We're only selecting communities that are going to have significant local government buy-in and participation because with the regular GIC Program, we have the GIC teams come to us wherever our conferences are. We move them around the state to make it convenient for people, but the teams have to come to us, but for GIC Senior, we're going to them. And so because we're taking the effort to bring all of our people to you, we're going to have, we're going to require that local governments participate and receive this education that we're providing.
Yeah, and Baby, I think that's great feedback for our team to take away that we should probably clarify a little bit more in our application about the technical assistance who will be receiving it and that it will include exactly what you said, like this is what you can use this money for. This is what you can't use this money for, for all of the funding sources that are available. So thank you for that feedback.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments about the technical assistant piece? Assistance piece?
This is a great time for any of our GIC community people to, if they have any suggestions or needs, this is a great place for you to chime in.
Okay, maybe everyone's just waiting to share their comments on the flexible funding. So we, well, yeah, like I said, this can be kind of fluid, but I want to also get y'all's feedback on what we think. So with the flexible funding piece, each GIC Senior Community can receive up to $1 million to address their local barriers. Our sort of intention here is to keep that as broad as possible and not sort of narrow it, but we want to get your thoughts like, does that approach make sense to you? Do you see any pros or cons with doing it the way that we're doing it in the application? And are there specific other considerations that you think we should take into, take into consideration regarding the flexible funding part? I can hear the birds chirping outside my window right now. It's so quiet. Okay, Jamie, because circumstances for each community are different, I think it's best to keep it broad. Yeah. Thank you for that feedback. All right. If there's any other comments on that, I see maybe one other person's typing in the chat. That's great. As that, as that feedback is coming in. Okay, Dr. Bambi, you said, "Agreed, broad." Okay, okay, good to know. We're always open to other feedback too, but. So our sort of final question for y'all, and we can take till the end of 12th in case anything kind of comes to you later, but the final question, or sorry, 11:30. The final question is just sort of, you know, we have, you know, nine days to finalize this application. We're going to incorporate this feedback, but we really want to ask you, are there ways that you see that we can strengthen the application? Weak points, any areas where you really think, oh, this could be a missed opportunity if we don't do this? Or anything like that? So again, acknowledging we're on a fairly short timeline, so any kind of like serious pivot is a little hard to do at this point, but we could, you know, we could have a conversation about it. As folks are thinking about their responses or or typing them in, we want to just let y'all know that we will keep you up to date on the application. You know, once we hear back, you all will hear from DCA if we receive the funds. So we just want to make sure that y'all know that. And in terms, if there's any process related questions, you know, we're welcome, we welcome those too.
And for the perspective, GIC senior communities online, the the award for this should happen before the communities are selected, so you would know whether or not you had this funding in advance of the application. Big deal.
There we go. Okay, so from Fernanda from Pembroke, "Are y'all mentioning the large economic opportunities coming to the states? For example, the Hyundai Megaside, and how GIC communities who have previously been in the GIC program need those additional resources for those sorts of unforeseen shifts in demand on already strained affordable housing stock?"
I can take that, yeah. So that would come in in your application. So if Pembroke were to be selected for the program, we would definitely tailor our education to that. Because we're going to tailor our education to each community that we work with. And so your education would be focused a lot on how to deal with this massive influx of employment to your community. As far as the actual application process, that would be something that you put into your narrative portion of your application, where you're explaining why your community would need this. You would not get necessarily like preferential treatment in in that regard, but that would be a compelling narrative for us to score.
Yeah, and also on that note, I I we have not included that in our need section of the application specifically for this HUD Pro funding, and I definitely think that we should. So thank you for the reminder and feedback, especially as we continue to see more and more investment investment throughout the state of Georgia from different industries. So thanks so much for highlighting.
Yeah, I think all three or four of the major economic development projects are happening and are very near to our GIC communities.
Yeah, that's great feedback for us to incorporate.
I would, I would encourage us to take a look at that priority map that HUD provided because I'm pretty sure that a lot of our economic development projects are likely located in those areas.
That's a great point, Ken. Thank you.
Okay, well, are there any sort of final reactions, comments, input, questions? Got two minutes left, and it's totally okay if we end a couple of minutes early, but want to make sure everyone has an opportunity.
If you have feedback at this point, please come off mute and speak so we don't run out of time.
All right, y'all, well. Thank you. Thank you so much for attending, for sitting through the presentation and for providing your feedback. It's super valuable, super, super valuable. And we'll spend the next couple of days going through the notes from today and and trying to incorporate all of your feedback into our final application. Again, it's due on October thirtieth, so next week we'll be submitting it. And then we will hopefully hear back from HUD with positive news at some point in the next couple of months, and we'll keep everyone up to date. So thanks. Hope you all have a great rest of your day and take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.